So we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Board of Allegiance. Board of Allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Moving along into recognition.
All right, perfect. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'll be able to present some of our LES Invention Convention students. First, I want to thank Mrs. Olson for leading this charge and Mrs. Scorsese for supporting this type of work in our elementary school. The kids love it. Every year, it's a highlight for our staff, for our community, and some board members who have been judges to come down and see our students' creativity and critical thinking on display. We do have three finalists that will be representing LES at the Connecticut Invention Convention State Finals at UConn on Saturday, May 3rd. I'm going to announce their name. And when I say your name, if you could stand up so everybody could see you, I'm going to say a brief description of their invention. And then after we do our celebration, we'll go out into the foyer and they'll give you a little presentation. So first, we have Juliette Rose Bremen from Grade One with alicorn dust which solves the problem of sticky fingers when eating a roasted marshmallow or smore. From second grade, created an egg salient egg scooper which helps people collect eggs from a chicken coop without getting your hands dirty. Last but not least, from Grade Three, Jackson Mezzarelli with the Switch-a-face, which is a versatile plushy toy with changeable faces that helps kids express their emotions. So congratulations to the three of you. Thank you, family members, for coming. And we will look forward to seeing you out by your display and having a brief presentation. So if you wanted to head out to the table in the foyer, we'll be right there. All right, we also had a recognition, something that would go to our work as a Board of Education and some of the work that the administrative team is doing in the district. CAE had a communication report. So we are members of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And they had an opportunity to submit budget presentations, superintendent updates, other communications that come from the district. They had an opportunity to submit the work that we've done to improve our website, that different platforms for communication. So I took the opportunity to submit some things and we were recognized. So we are supposed to have someone here tonight to present us with an award. I don't see anybody in the audience just yet. So maybe we can transition to the Invention Convention students. And if they are able to make it later on, maybe we can have them come up and speak on behalf of CAE.
I don't know, Sheri. Nicole says I'm going old.
She retired. But she was in that year. She retired. You know, like in the middle of the year. So I'm going to forward you what he sent. So you can copy it if you want. But I'm going to send it to you now. You can see it. Someone actually brought this one.
Monday school.
It won't do.
Oh, that's during vacation.
All right, appreciate it.
I got the email. The letter said. For like not knowing when they were, so I just signed them. But it comes in emails. So now I have to remember to check my. I see some very messy stuff. They're Tuesday next week for the new cards, right?
Yeah.
So even if they're not using them on the doors, the cards are active.
Yes. So the cards, because we're three different systems, like the cards are always active for your system.
Okay.
Like I can't ever shut that off.
Right, so they'd be active today if we did it today.
If you put your numbers in right now, they'd be.
A few reminders. Especially now, you know, budget season is a very challenging time. We are Board of Education members and have the responsibility to fulfill that role. In the interest of keeping our meetings focused and productive, I respectfully remind everyone to be concise with their comments and to speak directly to the matter. It'll ensure that everybody has a chance to contribute. And as chair, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that there might be times when I need to interrupt. And if I do, I will stay in line. Moving right along to communication.
All right, we do have a letter of resignation from Genevieve Noasad. Genevieve is resigning from her position as school librarian at Lyman Memorial High School effective June 30th, 2025. She writes that this decision was not an easy one. It's not an easy one for us to take either. She's thoroughly enjoyed her time in Lebanon Public Schools, cherished the memories and opportunities to engage students and create an engaging resource library environment, support literacy programs within the school, and encourage students in their academic journeys. The relationships she's built with students and colleagues have been incredibly rewarding, and she's grateful for those experiences. We thank her for all she's done and wish her the best.
Moving on to public participation. In accordance with Board Bylaws 9011, we invite public participation. We have allotted a total of 30 minutes. Each community member is allowed two minutes. Thank you. Ryan will follow the timer. Is there any member of the community who'd like to speak? Seeing none.
I want to.
Please state your name and your address.
Zachary Johnson, 129 Orchard Street in Orange, Connecticut. Work here at the high school. Represent the Lebanon Educators Association as co-president. I'm here to implore that the Board of Ed follows our portrait of a graduate, that we teach our own students at the high school. One of those pillars is critical thinker. And I think within the next week, two weeks, three weeks, however long a budget process or questioning process or discussion process goes, I implore to use those skills that we teach our students. Those skills include data-driven inferences using evidence-based sources as well as data backed up from credible sources. It entails a recognition of audience and a thinking of a platform in which voices are heard. The past couple of weeks, I have unfortunately heard a lot of questioning, seen a lot of questioning on things where I have offered my own hand in the assistance of the understanding or the facilitation of this information. And I have not heard from anyone who had been questioning that information. I request that you reach out if you have questions, if you feel as though the information you yourself are presenting is being questioned. It's possible that there is a slight misconception. I build the schedule at the high school. I'm very, very well-versed in the intricacies of class sizes as well as course offerings. And I think that most of the discussion, most of the things mentioned here today and some of the things can be thought about in that regard, where if we knew the factual information, if that factual information was to reach the public and you, I think we would find ourselves in a different situation. Thank you.
Seeing none. We will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda in your board packet starts on page nine. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
motion by Sarah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous.
So as we, as students of this district, we want to stress the importance of our opinion and our voice and the effect that the proposed Board of Finance budget may have on us as learners in this community. We want to preference this by making a quick and in general statement that this is our education and ours only. We also recognize that the proposed Board of Finance budget is not the Board of Education's responsibility, seeing as you have approved your own budget. But me and Holden have student duties as the representatives to report on the students' judgments and of those actions, seeing what will be in effect in the future. These actions from proposed budgets to votes to deliberations held against you all will always have like trajectory of our education and what is like, what is to come of our futures. When budgets like Superintendent Gonzalez are proposed, it is always taken into account that the student perspective and how the budget will affect our education. However, the Board of Finance proposed a budget cutting half the superintendent's original number. Our perspective and the future of our education is nearly not as respected.
Um, I did not realize Mr. Johnson would be here. So I got to make sure my stats lingo is correct. But of a surveyed sample, we'll take points off. We feel that, and we do recognize that this is not your budget. We just, this is our duty as student reps to present how students feel about what they're hearing from whatever sources, parents, the website, anything like that. But we do feel that any possible cuts in programs or anything that may come into effect if this budget is passed could put us at a disadvantage in our education. Like Cassidy said, this is our education. And it is unfortunate fact, unfortunate fact that we do not get to vote and make decisions about it. But it is the facts. If specified programs or opportunities are removed from our course list, if you will, here at LPS, we feel that we are not given the same opportunity to advance our learning for the next level, whether it be college or the workforce, whatever it may be. Furthermore, we do feel that if we are not offered the same programs going forward, we may appear less appealing to colleges come application time. For example, just for reference, UConn reported this past year, they had a record of over 62,000 applications. Their acceptance rate is only around 54.5%. So if we aren't, as students, given opportunities to, you know, take specialized programs, I mean, there's a number of programs here that I know you guys pride yourself on offering us. We just won't, we know that we will not be as appealing to colleges, and that will affect our futures. We are a small district. And like I said, you guys have always, Lebanon Public Schools has always prided themselves on what they offer their students from ag to, oh, well, I don't have a list in my head, but there's plenty of things that you guys offer us and that we, a lot of us have taken advantage of. VHS, WIP program, AGs, everything like that, sports, anything. We do want to just leave you with this. Remembering that most of us can't vote, some of us seniors can. I unfortunately cannot. But this is, like we said, our future. If we are not given the opportunities that Lebanon Public Schools has, like I said, prided itself on for years, we are given an unfair advantage as we move on to the next level. We, this school district, and our education is not a business. And we thank you for hearing our opinions on this matter.
Any questions?
Just a little one. Cassidy, did you say that you're under the impression that the Board of Finance?
Sheri, can you please direct your comments to the chair?
All right, well, I'm talking to Cassidy. So I don't, I don't know if I misunderstood or misheard, but I think that she said that the Board of Finance cut the Board of Education's budget in half. Is that correct? Is that what she said? The budget itself was cut in half?
Sure, I think, and again, I'm speaking on Cassidy's behalf here. So Cassidy, if I'm incorrect, I think she's referencing the proposed increase, not the entire budget. So we're not, we're never cutting backwards. The proposal that the superintendent put forward that the Board of Ed approved was 6.42% increase. The Board of Finance, at this point, has made a decision to move only to public hearing, a 3.21, which is half of the proposed increase. So I think Cassidy was speaking to the increase.
All right, that's what my understanding personally was too. And am I correct in understanding that there will possibly be a referendum on that?
I don't think that speaks to the student representatives on the board.
All right, well, thank you for clearing that up. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to reports of committees. We'll start with the policy.
Sure.
It's first on my list. It's the same every month.
So policy tonight. And we had a stack of stuff, as you could see in your packets, but it's not quite as daunting as hopefully, as one might think. We talked about the armed security officer policy. We talked about that one prior. Shipman actually wrote a policy for us. It's short and sweet, but it captures all the salient stuff that the subcommittee was looking for. So we'll be bringing that forth. Policy numbers 1003, 4009, 4012, 5012, 5018. So there's five of them in all. I'll be making a motion here in a second. But the long and the short of those five policies is we've recently updated them. But due to the change, due to President Trump's executive orders, we need to change the language in five of our, these five policies. So what the recommendation is, is that we basically move back to our previous version of the policy. So that's what we will be doing. So all the red lines that you see are what you see in our current policy. The blue is what we're going to be reverting back to. And again, this is to keep us in compliance with President Trump's executive orders. Then we had two, four, five policies that were all pretty much mandated updates for one reason or another. Their school climate, climate policy, Connecticut School Climate Policy was a state updated for us. The bullying prevention and intervention policy in a safe school, we actually are able to repeal that one because of one of the other policies that's there, the school security and safety covers that now. So that encompasses in it, so we don't need duplicative policies. And then the visitors and observations in schools. So the school security and safety, visitors and observations in schools are a direct result of Public Act 1, State of Connecticut Public Act 1. It's basically the revision to add what administrators and the district should do if immigration authorities request entrance into the district. And then lastly is the restorative practices response policy. And again, that was passed by the Connecticut General Assembly. It's basically nonviolent, you know, approaches to behavior issues. And the school climate, the restorative practices, all those policies need to be implemented on the books by July 1, which is why we're bringing them forth tonight so that we can get them done over the next couple of months before we begin summer break. So that brings me to the last item. Because we need to move or we want to move forward with the armed security officer, and we've already been without a school resource officer for a couple of months now, we choose not to go another two months. Add to that the executive orders that we need to get out of the book sooner rather than. I am going to ask that we amend, make a motion that we amend our agenda for tonight to add an action item number six and its act on a limited suspension of policy 9012 and add that to be number seven. And that was a motion.
The motion is to amend the agenda to add action item number six, which would read Act on Limited Time Suspension of Policy 9012, number seven. I'll second that. So, one second. Second by Dawn. So the motion on the floor is to amend the agenda. That is what we'll discuss at this point now that we have a motion and a second. We're not making, we're not discussing what could potentially be the action item. It's only to amend the agenda. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Sarah.
Sorry. So action item number six reads currently. Act on suspension of number seven, 9012.
That's the motion.
However, I'm looking at the agenda and it reads number, is number six. Unless that was not what was posted, but this is just what I picked up.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Okay, so that we don't need to amend the agenda. That's why I was looking at you funny.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Never mind. I retract my suggestion. Well, there we go. And so that was policy.
Yeah, I printed it.
Yeah.
So both the motion, the second and the motion. Now, Denelle, strategic plan curriculum. Rachel Finance.
We met this evening first to talk about the 2024-25 budget, which has been a roller coaster with special education needs of people moving in and out of the district. As we stand right now, we are getting a little less than we anticipated last time we met because when we have students that move out of the district, special education needs, we are going to get less of a reimbursement from the state. That being said, we should be okay probably using some of our non-lapsing funds, but hopefully not. Stay tuned for the rest of the roller coaster ride. So we discussed also some potential state rulings that may affect next year with special education needs and some. But of course, that's to be passed. So we'll wait on that. 2025-26 budget. As you know, the Board of Finance is putting forth a 3.21% for the Board of Education. We talked about the public hearing coming up on the 14th, 7:30, Lyman Auditorium. Andy is going to answer questions that have come up, especially questions that he was brought up at the Board of Finance that he was not given the opportunity to answer. So he will address those questions and other questions that he has heard of since that meeting. And hopefully, that's productive and we'll move forward from there.
Sarah, Superintendent Evaluation.
Yes, so we have not met, however. It is about that time of year for end of year evaluation for superintendent. So I have just sent you all an email with the blank evaluation document included. If you could, please get me your feedback and your input by the 20th. Also included that date, it gives you a couple of weeks. But if you'd like, you can go ahead and just add to what you began in mid-year. Just make sure you delineate what was mid-year and what was end of year, just so that we are, I'm able to understand what is what when I'm deciphering all of the input and all. Next meeting, we'll have a brief. Next meeting, we'll have a brief session to go over the summary of what you all send. So then, Dawn and I can present to Andy. Any questions on it? Just let me know.
I have a question. So, we're supposed to get it to you by the twenty-fifth. Is that by email? I mean, how do we get it?
Yeah, you can get it to me by email, sure.
Make sure that the subcommittee is on.
The agenda next. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah? Sarah, Nicole, and/or Brian. The school study slam? Any, any update?
There is, I received an email back about three weeks ago that, from the First Selectman's office, that stated they understand that it's a priority, but provided no date. So, we are coming up now on three months since our last meeting. Because there was a transition between the, in the chair role, if there's no objection, I'd like to reach out again to the Board of Selectmen and Chair of the Board of Finance to get a date on the books. Another, about nine days will be three, three months.
Also, our understanding, we are being led to believe that we're waiting for a response from an attorney. We've never had that experience as a Board of Ed, waiting three months for a response from an attorney. So, my question is, you know, what is, what is our legal representation? And what is the urgency that's been communicated? So, if you think it's absolutely worth nudging.
Any questions? Thank you. Dawn, Safety and Security.
No report.
Alexis. Sherry, Climate, Culture, and Enrollment.
Well, we have the minutes from March eleventh to be approved, but we haven't met since then.
We just approved them as well with the consent agenda. Nicole, Facilities.
Okay, we met this evening. There was only one item on the agenda, and that was for displays of artwork. So, at LMS, some students are doing a really nice job in producing artistically done murals that kind of define their style or their creativity. And so, we were thinking that maybe we could try and do that at Lyman, especially with the bathroom stalls. I recently went to a function at Plainfield High School, and I found, when I went to the bathroom, that the stalls were all created by students and all different designs. So, I brought that up to Andy, and he would, the next step would be to inform the art teachers here at Lyman, if any of them are interested in supervising students that would like to spruce up the bathrooms. So, that more details will
In the conversation, we stressed that this would be something that's a voluntary project, and it wouldn't be isolated to only the art teachers. If there were teachers or paraeducators or other staff in our, in our school system who wanted to engage with students in that way, that would be something that we could open up. It's not going to be something that's required or, or, you know, added on to the responsibilities already of our very busy teachers.
That's it. Any questions or comments for Nicole? East Con, speaking, and governance met last week. Administrators Reports.
So, we're trying something a little bit different. Our administrators, as always, put together very detailed reports, which are in your packet. But tonight, we wanted to celebrate one exciting thing, so I asked them to be thinking about something that's taken place in their, in their school or their department. They're going to kind of come up and share that exciting with you within a minute. So, it's going to be a quick, quick and brief update. And look at Mr. Appicelli, he's coming right up to set the tone.
Should I set a timer?
Yes, 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 you should. So, my, my one thing is actually two things, but my one thing has to do with world language, and particularly Spanish. So, it's in my board packet, but I did want to bring this to everyone's attention. We do this thing, the Seal of Biliteracy, which goes on a student's diploma. And it's a rigorous test, and there are, there were students that took this test, started at seven thirty, and were here after school ended, making sure that, you know, they answered the test to the best of their abilities. So, we had three students who successfully passed all four sections of it. Hannah Gonzalez, Jenny Lopez, and Nora Rogers. The other students who did not can try and retest after a certain amount of time to try and, you know, get that. So, these students, and it's, it's speaking, it's listening, it's, you know, writing, it's a whole bunch of different things. So, I really wanted to highlight those. And on the theme of Spanish, the Spanish Honor Society inducted a whole bunch of new members, and I just want to read off their names, so you know, you know, who was successful in that. Joshua Katie, James Crowley, Sylvie Hiltz, Talia Hiltz, Owen Massey, David Medina, Eleanor Rogers, and Alex Fedarski. They were all inducted into our Spanish Honor Society. And then, please make sure you look through the rest of the board packet.
We're kind of cheating, because there's two of us. Just two quick things. Our CNA program, which started the year with seven kids in it, it did drop to five unfortunately, but guess what? All five passed their certification. So, we just wanted to get the names out there. Juliana Helm, Haley Cardinelli, Valerie Valencia Vega, Abby Laws, and Sylvie Hiltz. Congratulations. And the last thing is the Lebanon FFA winners for Prepared Speech. Taylor Lawrence got first place.
Steperaneous.
Thank you.
Yep.
Speech, Kaitlyn Howard, second place, and they will compete at the state level on May seventeenth, so wish them luck.
CNA, can I just quickly point out, CNA, we're a perfect nine for nine over the last two years.
Nice.
Yeah, well, we didn't talk, but my, my job obviously interlaps, interlaps with everybody's building. But, you didn't talk about this, right?
No, I'm about to talk about it.
I'm stealing it. I'm stealing it.
You can steal that.
Yes. So, okay.
Building Thinking Classrooms? That's not what's on here. Stop trying to cheat.
Here we go. Well, there are lots of times, right, when I work with the admin and instructional coaches on professional development. And they're often, right, I've talked about it, how our professional development, it's in my notes, about how it bridges with our building and district goals. There are times, which are so exciting for me, when a teacher comes to me and says, hey, I have something in mind that would tie in, and like, they bring the concept. Now, Building Thinking Classrooms is something very hot off the press in the mathematics world right now. It's in many of, of professional developments that I attend. There's often the originator, Peter, I'm going to say his name wrong, so I'm not going to say it, but he's been coming even more locally this way to do major presentations. And so, kind of goes with your question about this sixth grade teacher and noticing her math score. So, where I felt like it also tied in with your share of the last meeting. So, Jen Wales is a sixth grade math teacher at LMS. A year ago, she approached me with this concept. She asked for some summer work. She took, as you know, we have iReady classroom mathematics. There's a tie-in. That program is also putting in concepts of that Building Thinking Classroom into play. We had a professional development on March twenty-eighth, which tied in a little bit of the work. But why I'm celebrating her in particular is because not only did she take this upon herself to do some of her own research on her own time, she also was willing to share and collaborate, which is very awesome at the middle school, because as you recall, there is one teacher for every contact. So, it's not like Jen has someone in sixth grade to share math ideas, right? So, she has to really branch out to make sure that it's applicable to the rest of her colleagues. And so, this concept truly does capture that. We had our first, what I would call our first official in the, in the math team of peer walkthroughs. So, she opened her door to allow her colleagues to come in. We had a toolkit about iReady classroom mathematics integrity, as well as the Building Thinking Classrooms. She also asked for funding, not very expensive, something I could take from Title One, because it applies. But she has re-formatted her entire classroom. If you walk in her room, you'll see dry erase boards throughout the classroom. It is nothing you've, it is not, it is out of this world and all applicable to what the student, like, the, the brain needs to work. So, the, so if you, if you did this Board of Ed standing, you'd probably be even more effective than you already are. So, there's a concept behind standing up, right? Why many people now have working desks, like myself, where we're standing. And so, that's the concept. Kids are standing up, they're out of their desks, they're collaborating. Ties them with our portrait of the graduate, they're collaborators, they're thinkers, they have to. She did so many times during our observation, where she would look at the students, say, tell your audience what you're thinking. Make sure, who's the recorder? There's, there's very distinct roles with this philosophy. The other teachers during our debrief are ready to roll, they're engaged in it as well. So, our hope is that we're going to build on this, create sort of maybe a book club. We, of course, have Adam McReynolds as the interventionist who's helping this, and Erica Strong as well, to bridge this work and tie it in for next year to keep building. I'll show you just briefly. So, those are just some concepts behind it, right? Encouraging collaboration, deeper thinking, student-led problems. And then, if you reflect, this is just like, I'm a visual person, as well, if you can flip to the next slide. This is what it looks like. So, you can see the three students. She has these boards throughout her classroom. She has like, as they do problems, that you don't see it here, but there's like checklists. When, if you go in her classroom, you ask the students about what they're doing, they can share it with you. They, you know, math can be hard. It's a hard content. And so, she's been able to swift that into, you know, greater engagement. So, I just wanted to kind of highlight, because as you're going to hear from Chad, the middle school's been very busy the last two weeks. And so, so this, you know.
She even knows I'm talking about it.
I know, I know. So, just kudos to her, just a highlight.
I just wanted to share a really neat story. We talk about inquiry with the kids and where it can, where it can lead you. So, in Ms. Yon's fifth grade humanities class, they're researching the American Revolution. And they're, they don't just need to research writings and manuscripts, but they can research visuals as well. And so, the students found some pictures of the American Revolution, and the question was, the question was, how can you cite these pictures? That led to some questions about who painted the large Revolutionary War paintings that are displayed in the LMS library, which led Ms. Yon to do some investigation about who painted them. His name was John Wagner, his name is John Wagner, which led to her looking up where he might be. And she came across Rockwell, or Rocky Wagner, who is his brother and manager, who is a art restoration specialist who lives in Plainfield. So, she emailed Rocky, and the same day, he showed up at our office unannounced. And we immediately got him down to the classroom to meet the kids and allow him to talk about his brother's paintings that are in the library. So, a pretty cool experience for the kids. They were blown away. Then Rocky came back to my office and spoke to me a little bit about the paintings, and as an art restoration specialist, art restoration specialist offered to do a free cleaning of all the paintings that has never done, been done before. So, he's going to be coming with his crew on the Monday and Tuesday over April break. Not only are they going to clean the paintings, but they're also going to erect some scaffolding and do some digital imaging of the pictures. And one particular, the one of the Connecticut delegation signing the Declaration of Independence is going to be used as a poster that's going to be distributed around municipalities and, and schools across Connecticut next year as part of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. But we'll have the original that sits in our library. So, that was a great conversation, only to be bested several weeks later, when again, on late in the evening, I'm sitting in my office, and the bell rings, and there's two gentlemen at the door, one being Rocky and one being John, the actual artist, who was wheeled into the library for the first time in, I don't know how many years, before nineteen ninety-five, which had, or ninety-four, which is when this building started, because he told me that these giant paintings got up there, because the actual students there at the old Lyman helped erect them. So, that was pretty cool. He also said that every single painting has an inscription written on the back. As part of the cleaning process, they're trying to, going to try to get behind there with cameras too, to actually record what the inscriptions are. So, we're super excited. If you're free on that Monday or Tuesday over April break, and you want to dip in and see the actual artist, it's a neat experience for sure.
Good evening, everyone. I have a preschool theme for today. I have two quick shares for today. So, we, again, we have our school day preschool classroom, and we were able to begin the application process again for this year. And we received thirty-two applications for our school day preschool program, which we're really, really excited about. So, now we'll create our roster for next year. We're looking for sixteen seats going into next year. But again, I am overwhelmed by the community's response. Thirty-three applications last year, thirty-two this year. So, that's pretty exciting. Along the theme of preschool too. So, you know our play-based learning initiatives this year, and our kindergarteners just went to the aquarium today to get some background information about their aquarium learning scenario that will be taking place in the next couple of weeks. But our preschoolers started a post office in their classroom. I'll pass this around. You'll see that they delivered mail throughout the school.
It was so cute.
Yeah. It's so sweet. And were able to write letters and practice their early writing skills too. And as Mrs. Burchu shared, they would do anything to be able to do this, so they were definitely excited. I'll pass these around. I'd love to get them back, because this is my letter.
Couple of connections in wanting to share a few exciting things myself. So, additionally, in preschool on Friday, they are going to be completing their weather unit by retelling Cloudy with a Chance of Meatballs in, in kind of a pre-K way. So, I'm really looking forward to taking
Andy, that ties in with that play base.
So, looking forward to taking a walk through that. And Chad mentioned being available on Monday. I know everybody's very interested to be a part of the public hearing that will take place on Monday night at seven thirty in the Lyman Memorial High School Auditorium. So, maybe you can stop by and take a look at the art restoration work, and then make your way over to the auditorium for the budget presentations that will take place. I did also want to celebrate today, we had Irene Farisi from the Talent Office at the State Department of Education come visit the middle school, in particular, to look at how our AI pilot implementation is going. So, she met with the leadership team, saw, asked us what questions we might have about the ongoing work. Then she actually got into classrooms. Chad was able to put together a schedule and invite some of us to, to join. So, it was nice for me to be able to see some of the things that the students are working on, and even more so, how the teachers are integrating it, some really powerful things happening at the middle school. And to, made a deal with Mr. Johnson, and he will not be submitting a principal's report next month. He's going to do a demo on some of the AI tools for you next month. Exciting.
Questions? Thank you very much. Onto the finance report.
Equally exciting stuff. Here comes Mark on the budget.
Nobody sees that. Nice try. There's no update to the information that was provided in the packet, and that was already discussed in the summary Rachel gave from the committee meeting. The non-lapsing fund currently has a balance of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents.
Any questions?
I'm still non-lapsing, but time will tell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, under new business, we have the first, we have six first readings.
Yeah, so, we've got armed security officer, nondiscrimination. So, four zero two three, one zero zero three, four zero zero nine, four zero one two, five zero one two, and five zero one eight. The subcommittee filed forward for our first reading. That um, Subcommittee five four, for our first read.
Moving on to the action items, first is act on letter of resignation, is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Second it.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Sheri, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Number two is act on turf and land state contract extension, year three, um, if you're following along your board packet, that is on page one eighty-one. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that uh, we approve the, excuse me, twenty-five, twenty-sixth uh, extension for Powers Outdoor Services in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole, is there a discussion?
Just a quick question, if um, we are happy and satisfied with the performance with the last couple of years?
Yeah.
We have been.
Yeah, if I could join John, just as another point of comment. Uh, that number that is up for approval is less than what is currently budgeted, um, by a slight amount, uh, but it is less. And when the original contract was drafted, it was a one-year contract with capabilities of extension in year two and year three. And because we have been pleased, that's why we've stayed with the same contractor.
Sheri and then Brian.
What was the amount last, um, previous year?
Sixty-six.
It was uh, sixty, yeah, six-six, three-three-six, and that's what I was gonna comment actually Sheri on. It's a, um, it's only in a, uh, an increase of two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars or three point eight seven percent this year of extension.
Gas is going up.
Gas is going up, yes ma'am.
Did you have a comment?
That was my comment.
That was your comment, okay.
No, that was what I was gonna say.
Rachel.
Is this year three?
This is year, this, if, if approved, it will be year three yet.
Questions or comments?
I think you have a comment. Just to say that he does everything that's in here, talks about new project approval, support services, et cetera. He does not prepare our athletic field like for games and contests, but he mows them, but just wanna make the presentation. Because we've talked about equipment for those purposes, which is separate.
Thank you. Sheri.
When we start looking into what our options are in this contract and.
Months in advance. So John, i- if we decide to go out for a request for proposals, we'll be doing that months in advance.
And, and might we consider this?
If, if the proposals come back and we feel that that particular contractor's proposal is the best offer. It's, it could happen.
So they still might be on the table?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Again, uh, motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. And we have act on second reading, so.
So I, uh, I make a motion that we adopt the updated policy three thousand, which is budget procedures and transfers. And uh, policy five zero one five, student nutrition and physical activity, basically their wellness policy. And I make that a motion.
Motion by Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dawn Jay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Act on field trip request, and again, if you're following along in your board packet, this starts on page one nine six, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the requested field trip to Disney World Orlando.
Motion by, seconded by Nicole, and motion by Sarah, seconded by Nicole, is there any discussion? Do you mind if Andy starts?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a little, a little bit of background of what they're gonna be doing. They're gonna be engaging in top-tier horticultural and aquacultural experiences, including participation in industry-leading programs and potential future internship opportunities. And just as a reminder, we did send Anna Tromza to professional development in Florida last year. And she has come back and implemented it in the classroom in amazing ways. Really impressed with some of the things she's been doing with raising trout for the state and continues to do uh, hands-on experiences for our learners. So not only was the professional development very beneficial for the educator and ultimately the students, uh, but this would be another opportunity for them to put their learning on display on a national level.
So my comment is just that this is a formal structured trip, it's isn't, we're gonna go to Disney and look at the plants while we're there. Um, I did have a question, I'm not sure if you can answer it or not. It says in the, on the request that they're hoping to get fifteen to eighteen students to go, as well as six adults, paying adults and two chaperones. And the rate is based on the number that they have, so I'm wondering if there is a minimum that they're willing to go with. If they don't get their fifteen to eighteen students, are they still gonna go? I don't know how that works.
I don't know that answer either. Mr. Appicelli?
Hey, to be honest, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I could get back to you on that.
Yeah, when she met with us, she, definitely the price would be changing if there wasn't enough. That's for like the price track. So once she gets a clear understanding of how many students are um, able to go and then also to determine some fundraising, which is why she wanted it approved now, so they could get going on that, um, then she'd be able to provide more information to families so they could plan accordingly. And also why now, because there's time for that. But I don't know if you've ever been to Disney World, I mean, they're pretty state-of-the-art with all of those pieces. If you go through Epcot, to the Land of the Sea, I don't know if you've done any of those. I mean, they really have some top-of-the-line um, experiences that the students will be able to engage in.
Any other questions? Sheri.
Yeah, I just wondered, certainly it would be an expensive trip, which makes me think, are there, um, is there a scholarship fund of any sort for students that may not be able to make up the difference from the fundraising, not only for this trip, but for any trip? Do we have that in our system?
Yeah. Mr. Appicelli? Yeah, so what I was gonna say, I mean, that would be the purpose of the, the fundraising, like to, to help defray the, the cost of doing that. For our students who go on the, to the national convention, you know, the stuff that they do during FFA, you know, the competitions they're a part of, they can earn like what they call FFA bucks and it allows them to deduct the cost of like even going to convention. So um, they planned on doing some fundraising to try and make that easier for people to handle. And one of the other things that they do too is if they can start, if they have the approval to go ahead and do this trip, you can actually, on some of these trips, pay in installments, so you don't have to do everything all at once. You can pay a little bit at a time until you, you know, you can, you know, make it easier to manage.
I, I guess my question is, if there is a student that can't make up the difference from the funding or whatever. I mean, I'm glad that it's being brought down, but if there perhaps was a student that still was not able to make up the difference, do we have a slush fund that we could help out with that?
I don't.
Okay. Have you ever considered that?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, yeah, I just don't know where I'd get the, the money for that. I mean, we, the Board of Ed is, has been generous with like the FFA, the National Convention. We have money, we actually have a line item to help kids go to that, but we don't have one that's just specifically for field trips.
Thank you.
Yeah. Could I just say one quick thing? Um, we were talking about the, the teacher, so while we were talking about this trip, she actually has another trip in mind for twenty-seven. And it would be, you know, to go to Ireland specifically for aquaculture, studying like oyster beds and things out there. So this person, you know, is thinking down, down the road too about, you know, giving our kids those kinds of experiences.
Sheri.
There's uh, an extensive oyster and shellfish um, bed at Potter's Pond in Rhode Island. Um, have you looked into maybe doing a?
I'll put that down.
She's been, she does a lot with the state, that would be good, maybe out of state too.
It's at Potter's Pond, the guy that runs it, um, he started out as a college student, now he owns that restaurant right on Potter's Pond. I don't know if any of you have been there. But definitely, um, he raises and has been for quite a while, raising oysters, clams, steamers. And uh, they are featured at many restaurants as Potter Pond Shellfish. And that's an hour away. Not, not to, you know, take away from the trip to Ireland, that sounds wonderful, but maybe as a, a pre-trip sorts and a comparative trip.
Thank you, Sheri. Any other discussion? Rachel.
I just wanna comment, I, I like the idea of this nightly security guard for their safety when they're in the hotel.
We have, it's motion by Sarah, seconded by Nicole, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Act on item number six, thank you again Sarah for catching me, my eyes moved from the field trip right to the next item.
So I move that we suspend bylaw nine zero one two, uh, number seven, from the April eighth regular meeting until the day after our special meeting, which will hopefully come up the week after next, it's vacation next week. Uh, board bylaw nine zero one two, number seven. And I'll state, uh, quote, except for emergency situations, policies will be adopted, amended, or deleted after consideration at two regular meetings of the Board of Education. The agenda shall be marked to indicate such policy matters, so end quote. So um. Oh, sorry. Well, I tested and finished it. Okay, yeah, you're right.
So will you read the motion one more time?
Uh, suspend bylaw nine zero one two, number seven, from the April eighth regular meeting until the day after the special meeting.
Okay, second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole, is there a discussion? That's okay.
Um, anyway, you can suspend it only for emergency situations. Uh, consider for uh, new or amended or deleted policies, instead of having us to go through the two regular by, uh, regular meeting process of the first and the second reading. So we want to, in accordance, uh, bylaw nine zero one four, suspend nine oh one two, number seven, um, from April eighth until the day after a special meeting. That way, that suspension will allow us to immediately address the armed security officer and those five policies that I stated earlier that were changed due to executive order.
Discussion?
We're gonna vote on those? Is that what you wanna do the week after next?
So right now, we'll vote on the suspension of those, so that, and we can, if we can come up with the special meeting, we can even amend the motion to read the special meeting, um, so that we, and then we would vote on those, we won't vote on those here, we'll vote on those at the special meeting. Yep. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Um, I will send out an email to get these for the. Personnel.
All right, so back to some of the conversations we had about budget and needing to have a plan for what may happen. Um, that wasn't accounted for necessarily in the Board of Education's adopted six point four two percent increase. I reached out to our legal counsel and they advised us that if we are going to be moving forward potentially with the reduction of teaching positions, that we need to follow the state statute on non-renewal of teachers. So there is a May first deadline for um, having the board take action on the non-renewal recommendation of the superintendent. So there's basically three steps for that. Uh, I needed to notify the teachers that I intended to recommend the non-renewal. And then tonight, I will share those uh, teacher names based upon their request and identifying that it is solely based on budget, not performance at all. Um, so there was an option for this to happen in executive session and the staff has reached out to me and asked that I discuss it in open session with you all. Uh, additionally, the teachers' union had asked, and this is not something we have to do by statute, uh, that we discuss the positions that potentially are going to be reduced, not cut. Uh, so I'm gonna do that for you this evening. Any questions about that?
What's the, the third step? So the first step is notifying teachers.
So the third step after, if the board takes action to approve it.
Yeah.
Uh, the teacher will receive written notice that the board impacted that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheri.
Are these all full-time teachers?
Currently?
The ones that you're considering?
No.
And are any of them instructional aides?
No, so the non-renewal statute is only for certified teachers. So I'm not gonna be discussing uh, paraeducators at this point, I'm not gonna be discussing custodians at this point, this is just certified staff.
And I assume that goes by seniority as well?
Yeah, there is a whole process to be followed.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Andy at the moment?
All right, so uh, starting with reductions, Paul Orsini, who is teaching uh, tech ed at the high school and middle school. Uh, reduction uh, for Nicole Johnson, who is an art teacher at the high school and the elementary school. Reduction of Jessica Castillo, who is a PE teacher at the elementary school. Uh, we also did discuss the reduction of a BCBA, but that position is currently not filled, so there's no name to attach to it. Um, I will move into the non-renewal notices. Uh, and again, these are all based on budget, not performance. We have Kelly Francis, who is a math interventionist at the elementary school. Jessica Alair, who is a preschool teacher at the elementary school. Krista Copeland, who is an elementary grade two teacher. Uh, Jennifer Laura, who is an elementary grade four teacher. Adriana Alfiero, who is a grade five middle school teacher. Adam Berlin, who is a high school science teacher. Brittany Forshaw, who is a high school science teacher. Rebecca Burton, who works in our ASTI department. And Anna Tromza, who also works in our ASTI program. Oh, uh, there is another one, I'm sorry, um, Melanie Martin, who is in English, a part-time English teacher at the high school.
Before there's discussion, um, do you wanna make sure that Anna got a list of those names?
I'll get them.
You'll get them, okay.
Yeah, and if I could just further clarify, so, kinda mixed in that communication that I gave you, there's reductions that you don't have to act on. Those are just conversation, because the union asked me to identify that those positions are at, in jeopardy of being cut. The non-renewal for the non-tenured teachers, those are the ones that need to be acted on tonight, so we, I can go over that list again.
So the four reductions we're not gonna.
I need to act on.
Um, not just yet.
There are ten non-renewals?
Um, one.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Two.
Ten.
Three. Yes, that's what I had.
There's one part-time, the rest are full-time? That's okay, you don't have to, yeah.
No, there's two part-time.
Two part.
Um, we put an anticipated executive session on the agenda for this purpose. But because they've asked to have it spoken about publicly, we do not have to take the anticipated executive session, it is on the agenda, we can if anyone wants to make a motion for that. But otherwise, we will stay in open session and move on to the action item. If, if we're ready to move on to the action item, the motion. We need a motion.
Discussion? And that's after the motion?
We, we need a motion and a second and then a discussion.
Thank you.
So, I make a motion that we act on a non-renewal of non-tenured teachers.
Seconded. Motion by Brian, seconded by Dawn Jay. Now we are able to have discussion. Uh, Rachel, and then from Nicole.
Um, I just want to first start out with the ASTI program. Is that is kind of a small program, am I correct? So, what is the impact of losing two teachers there?
Significant in the offerings that would be provided through our ASTI.
Would we still be able to have the same number of students involved in it?
Probably not.
Does that mean that we'll block then from the outside?
Because there's, there's certain caps on enrollment.
So, I'm very against this. I know it's policy, and I know that you're, you're doing the right thing for the state, but I'm, I'm so against even cutting one of those teachers. So, how does this affect the elementary school athletic department with taking Jessica out? And I'd like to know how fourth and fifth grade is going to be impacted without those teachers and all the other grades that are going to be impacted. Like, are we gonna have larger class sizes? Are we cutting programs? What are we doing?
I can answer in part. You know, obviously, I'd want to give you all a more detailed response on the questions that you present tonight, but I feel I can address most of what you're bringing up. So, it's not just athletics at the elementary school. You know, it's instruction. It's, uh, high-quality instruction, and in particular, this would impact, uh, the adaptive PE that she's been doing for some of our learners who need that level of access. Uh, that would unfortunately be something that would have to be totally reconfigured. She would not be in the building to lead that. She still will be able to offer the, uh, exploratory PE class. So, every grade level would still have that class. Uh, but some of the additional things that she's bringing to our community that are highly valued would no longer be able to happen. Class sizes, yes, there would be an increase if you have less teachers. If, if there's gonna be more students in each class. And then at the high school, it would affect our program of studies because courses and sections that we've put in to say that we'd like to run, if you have less teachers in those specific content areas, you may not be able to run the amount of electives that we'd like to, which kind of speaks to Holden's point about diverse offerings and the marketability of our students.
Rachel?
Um, for the adaptive PE, is that a requirement that we have to offer?
No.
Um, for the math teacher, the math interventionist, is that correct? Do we have another math interventionist there? Is that the only one there at the elementary school?
So, if you remember, we, we've tried to shift math supports kind of across the district and make that a focal area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, losing a staff member that's in the position doesn't necessarily mean that we would lose that role. Well, the person that we have in that position is highly qualified, and that's why we hired that person into the position. Uh, so, it would definitely impact, uh, our program.
Go ahead.
Yeah?
You're not done?
No, I'm not. Well, it's okay.
I don't really know where to start, to be honest with you, but I'm, I'm just gonna start. Cut me off, okay? Me too. I'm just gonna start with the impact that these teachers have on these students. This can't happen. This cannot happen. We need to get out there. We need to let people know what is at stake. Mr. Orsini, just to name one person.
Oh, my God.
The, uh, the impact that this man, this teacher, has had on these students.
Every one of them.
Is immeasurable. He's been here for years, years, and he's gonna go take a job somewhere else, or he could? Because they would offer a full-time position that's secure, just like Mr. Berlin, who teaches chemistry. Who's gonna teach chemistry? You know how hard it is to get a chemistry teacher? Now we're giving him a pink slip. I mean, I know that we have to do this be- based on the law. But come on, Lebanon. We have worked so hard to get these kids where they are. And you know what? Yep, we can all sit here and say gas prices are going up.
Yeah.
And we gotta pay it. Groceries are going up. We gotta pay it. We can gripe about it, but we've gotta pay it, just like education for our students. We have to pay it. We have to. It's not our fault that insurance is through the roof. We can't control that. We're doing everything we can to control insurance. Doing everything that's within our power. And yeah, I know a six four two is not an easy number. Neither is a three two one. I get that. We all have expenses. But you can't say to, stop and shop. I'm not paying you. I, I can't, you can't say to Shell, I'm not paying this much to fill up my gas tank. You gotta do it. Just like our kids, they need us. They need us to rally behind them. The, and the list goes on. I just picked a couple. But the list goes on. ASTI, how many more teachers are in the ASTI program besides these two? One or two, maybe? So, we are eliminating our ASTI program, which we have been given awards for by half. How can you do that in this town, Lebanon? This is what we stand for. Is our agriculture. This is in our, not only is it in our Board of Education strategic plan, it's in our community's con- conservation and development plan that we're doing these things. But now we're getting cut off at the knees because we're eliminating, uh, the funding that we need. And I will be quiet for right now to let everybody else speak, because I want to be fair.
I know that, I want to make sure that Rachel gets back to you, but if you don't mind, I'm gonna, um, Donnell hasn't spoken on it yet.
So, I've been here for a long time, and I still don't want to understand the reason of this happens. I mean, I get the overall, because it's being cut, but I always wonder why these particular positions are called out.
Aren't identified?
Yes.
Data hire. So, to become a tenured teacher, you need to have taught forty months in the district. So, the staff that's on there, that's in the non-renewal of non-tenured teachers have not stepped foot in the door for their fortieth month and one day, which would happen at convocation. Um, there are some teachers in our district who have been fast-tracked or are on a fast track, meaning they've been tenured in another district, and then they have twenty months to achieve tenure. Potentially could be on this list as well. But that's how the, the names that were brought forward are based on their tenure status.
What happens if we all vote no? What happens? We save their jobs?
So, then you are potentially putting the district in a position where these teachers would no longer be non-renewed. They'd be terminated.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Which is not good for the teachers in that position, and there are other considerations in terms of hearings and whatnot that come in a termination process versus a non-renewal process. It is much more, unfortunately, you know, to use the term, like, is cut dry.
Is there any other place in the budget to save money and save their jobs?
Is there other places? Yes, but there's nothing substantial. And, and I've illustrated that year over year in the, in the graph that I put forward. Um, and unfortunately, this is a year we're being forced to react to the fact that the largest percent of our budget by a wide margin is salary and benefits.
What was this?
So, agreeing with everything, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat because Sarah, you said that perfectly, so thank you for that. Um, I moved here in two thousand and four, and my family saw three kids go through all three of these schools. Very successful students because of what's offered here. I moved here with our family because of the school system. So, what I'm hearing from other people in the town and everything else, it is time for us to stand up for our kids. My kids are not in here any longer. I also volunteer my time on this board for the kids of this town. And I would hope that everyone else has that same passion and has, wants to see the town succeed. The fact that we're having this conversation is extremely disturbing, and I, I just, I hope we speak up and vote. I really do.
I'm gonna go to whoever hasn't spoken yet. Carrie, and then I know Sarah.
As I've mentioned before, I was a school teacher for thirty-seven years. I loved what I did. I loved the kids. I'm still getting requests to come back and teach, even though I retired fifteen years ago. The job market is open. Nobody wants to move. I understand that. I obviously didn't want to move from my district for thirty-seven years until I retired. So, I understand that. It's not all about money. If you love your system, you're gonna want to stay, and it would be a very, I was fortunate enough not to have to be, um, released before I had tenure. So, I understand that. I also understand that in our heart of hearts, just like parents, we want to do everything and anything we can for our kids. More so than we received as kids, the best we can. But unfortunately, we have budgetary restraints and priorities that we have to deal with. My dilemma is, I was, um, brought to the board from, um, the Republican Party, but I believe that the Democrats feel as strongly as I do about education, and I think that all of you do too. I think we're all on the same page as, education is important. We want the best for our kids. The thing that I find so difficult is I try to find a balance between what we need to do for our kids and what we need to physically be responsible for, for our citizens who are supporting us. That's a hard line to, to, to cro- to, it's like a tight rope. You could fall on either side easily. But our job is to take both sides and make the best decision that we can. I'm finding that very, very difficult. And I'll tell you what, in all honesty, I believe that this budget is going to pass here. And if I were to abstain or to vote no, it still would go through. And that would be, and, and to me, that would be, okay, we're gonna let the chips fall where they may. It's a very, very difficult decision for me to be there for our kids and there for our taxpayers. It's not a comfortable place to be. It, it's a hard place to be. And that doesn't mean that my heart isn't any more caring or empathetic or compassionate to our students or to our taxpayers. It's a conden- it's, 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 the hardest thing I've had to deal with is going down the middle, trying to represent both in a fair and equal way. And I've, I've stayed up at night struggling with this many, many times. I hear people, um, in their heart of hearts who feel one ways, all the way, I mean, without a doubt, one way, and other people, without a doubt, the other way. And I kind of envy you because you don't have to walk that line, and you don't have to think one way and the other, and this way and that way, and this way and that way. I envy you. And I just ask that you under- that you understand what a difficult decision and a difficult vote this is for some of us, myself included. I want to be the best for our students, and I want to be the best for our, our taxpayers. It's not an easy job, and that's it.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, I do want to remind us that as our role, um, on Board of Education, in our policy of ethics, uh, board members and superintendents are staunch advocates of high-quality, free public education for all Connecticut children. That is our role, Board of Education members. Uh, Rachel and Sarah.
Is the, are these, um, names that you read off a- above or on top of the six total FTE?
Yes.
Cuts. From the original six point four two.
Yes.
Um, what's gonna happen to our pre-K program for leaving that teacher, or someone else in, so that's a potential loss in that area?
Yeah, so this speaks to, uh, the process that potentially would have to be undergone. You have to look at data hire, all those different types of things. You have to look at certifications across the district. Uh, so, again, this is not a program that I think is going to stop because we potentially would lose a teacher. It's more the fact that we have a dedicated, high-quality professional who has got this program off the ground, and it's thriving or considering having to let that staff member go.
And then with the other cuts at the elementary school, second and fourth grade, um, obviously moving things around. You know, we have all said, like, that school's already at a max with, with, um, number of students in each classroom, so that's going to be going up as well?
Potentially, again. So, first, I want everyone to, like, pump the brakes a little bit. Just because I brought all of these non-tenured, non-renewals to you doesn't mean that every non-tenured, non-renewal will happen. You have to move them forward, or, or the statutory requirement to meet the timeline. I can always bring them back and ask you to reinstate them. Obviously, we need the budget to support that. Right. Um, and also, that doesn't mean that just because we, let's use fourth grade for an example. Use a fourth grade teacher, that doesn't always mean that the sections are going to reduce. We're gonna look certifications across the district, potentially slide people around. So, I don't want you to just equate, like, okay, we lost a preschool teacher. That means preschool's gone. That, that's not how that's gonna work. It's going to make it a strain. It's going to make it extremely difficult. It will require a lot of movement, and there will inevitably be sections that are not offered, but it doesn't mean that all of them would go away. That's why having these conversations, and I explained this to the union earlier, it's difficult to have these theoretical conversations at this point. We don't know where the budget is going, but we have to take steps to meet certain timelines.
I want to check in to make sure. There are a couple of board members who haven't had an opportunity to speak yet, so I will make sure that they have the opportunity.
I just, I can. Just one, uh, quick thing. Based off of what Andy just said, too, we have to, you know, let, if the process were to work its way out, we have to let administration do what they do and what Andy and, and the rest of the administrators do, and, and, and look at certifications and, you know, um, how it fits, you know, globally and what fits best for, for each one of the schools. So, you know, we've, we've all got a lot of questions as far as how that, you know, how the sausage is made, so to speak, but right now, you know, it may not, we don't necessarily have all the information, all the ingredients or whatever in order to make it, so, thank you.
Yeah? Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
Carrie?
I must step on anybody's toes. Um, I just wanted to clarify kind of what Andy said. So, yes, while I am obviously very frustrated with, um, the lack of understanding of where we're at and what the impact will actually be, I did want to just say, yes, this is part of the process, and I understand this is part of the process, and we have to vote to non-renew, which doesn't make me feel very well doing that, which I know it doesn't make you feel well, Andy. I mean, and certainly feel, my heart goes out to every person that could potentially be getting this letter, because while it's potentially not, you know, going to be a specific person on this list based on programs and what the impact will be, it's still a, oh, what if the board cuts this position next year? Oh, is my job safe? Oh, should I be buying my house near Lebanon so I can continue my career here? You know, am I going above and, you know, is this all going to pay off? So, while it doesn't necessarily mean, you know. So while it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that these are the positions that are being cut, it certainly is a very unsettling feeling for a new teacher, a non-tenured teacher, whomever. So I just need to make that clear as well. I just also want to just say one more thing. Sherry, I shouldn't address one person, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, it's not an easy thing for me to be as passionate and as energized in our youth of Lebanon, right? That's, and I'm not just seeing things without a dollar sign. I do consider both sides of the town. Obviously, I'm a taxpayer as well with three children. I get it, I understand. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that I have also done my due diligence as a Board of Education member to look at things from a fiscally responsible point of view. So it's not an easy choice for me as well to be this passionate about our students, but I believe it's my job as a Board of Education member to get behind each and every one of these kiddos and do what's in the best interest of them, because that's what I signed up for to sit here. That's what I signed up for.
Sherry, before you go, we realize that there's one additional name.
Yeah, I'm sorry to do this. So Amber Van Dyne, who is a social studies teacher at the high school. I missed her on the list, and that is again, budgetary following the statute for time of non-renewal of non-tenured teachers.
Sherry?
Okay, again, I'd like to just reiterate, as a parent and as a board member, I would like nothing more than to give everything we possibly can to our children, our own children and the children of our town. Make no doubt about that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can we comment about the public?
We have to keep with the action item.
I can't.
Sherry, is it a new comment, or is it?
It's a new comment, yes. I think we're all aware that there's a lot of buzz out there about the class sizes. And I can't help but think since I.
Sherry, I'm going to stop you there, you have to speak to the motion. How, are you tying this to the motion?
I believe I am.
Teachers, okay.
I think that the buzz about the class sizes is going to be landing in our lap very soon. And there's going to be requests to consolidate the classes, which to my seeing is going to mean, okay, what do we do with this teacher? What do we do with that teacher? My concern is, if we let teachers go now, we'll probably have to let more teachers go later. So I think we need to think about, not only today, but what's out there, the buzz and class sizes. I know, as chairman of that committee, I'm going to have to deal with it, I'm going to have to talk about it, and we're probably going to have to vote on things about class sizes, which affects the number of teachers we're going to be able to continue having in our system. And if I recall correctly, we had thirty new hires this past fall.
I'm going to stop you there, please. You are providing misleading information, not providing the whole picture when you make comments like that. So I'm going to stop you there.
Can you correct me?
Right now, we are speaking about this particular motion. It needs to, our conversation needs to be on this motion.
Okay.
We can provide corrected information, yes. I also want to remind you that we are acting on a motion from a board, from the board, about class sizes previously. Unless the board as a whole decides that this is a topic that needs, class sizes, that needs to be taken up again, it is not taken up again.
No, I'm not asking to take it up again, I'm just saying that.
In your comments, you shared that your committee was going to need to do it, so.
In the future, yes.
Not unless the board as a whole votes to refer that to the committee. Is there any other conversation on this topic? Thank you. The question has been called by Donnell. Again, motion made by Brian, seconded by Dawn Jay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion is to act on non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. That is unanimous. Items for the next agenda, I have a subcommittee for the superintendent evaluation. Will you also need an executive, an anticipated executive session? Any other items? Of course, at any point before it's posted or probably before the governance committee, then you can send the entire governance committee those agenda items, please, for meetings, any of it. And I will send an email out about that. It is nine oh six, and we will.
Thank you.